Absolutely.
Good evening. I now call the May 22, 2023, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I am in Kuznavich Town Manager. Can we please stand for the pledge? This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted as a hybrid remote meeting. It sits with Mass General Law, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public may join the meeting remotely by telephone, 1-408-650-3123, using access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, the first item on tonight's agenda is the annual reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being held tonight following the May 16, 2023 annual town election. I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate Selectman Dan Carpenter, Selectman Anne Kavanaugh, and Selectman Todd Karine. Following this agenda item, I will turn the meeting over to the newly elected Chair. I will now open nominations for Chairman. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Manager, I'd like to nominate Sarah Roughly as Chair.
Are there any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, the nominations are now closed. That being said, I'm going to ask, starting with Mr. Todd Karine.
Yes.
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 Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Roughly.
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Roughly. I will now turn this over to you in seeking nominations for Vice Chair.
Okay.
I am opening the nominations for Vice Chair.
Nominate Dan Carpenter.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Can I nominate?
I'll second that nomination.
Sorry, thank you. I would like to nominate Todd Karine. Oh, is there a second?
Turn down the nomination, thank you.
If there are no other nominations, the nominations are now closed. I will take a roll call vote for the Vice Chair position. Mr. Karine?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh? Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Congratulations, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
You have to stay here next to me now.
There's nothing in the room.
Okay. We will be moving on to public comments. I see that we have one. Ms. Kudrich, would you like to come up?
Thank you, and congratulations, Madam Chair. And congratulations to the new members. I watch all of your meetings at home. I'm a nerd, I know, but I watch all of your meetings at home, and I have a request, especially with two new members, that you speak into the microphones, you not lean back when you're speaking, especially when it's your turn to speak. We just can't hear you at home, and it's not cable because I can hear the people who speak into their microphones. And also, I know it's a respectful thing to turn and talk to your fellow board members, but remember, when you turn away from your microphone, we can't hear you. And whether people watch it live or in repeat, your meetings are very important to us, and we want to make sure that we can hear them, so just keep that in mind, please. Thank you. And the other item, I'm not sure if now or if you're going to open it up to public comment when you have the Town Clerk agenda item, but I would like to say something on that, so.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm sure, like you and like many in the town, when the Town Clerk Deb Greamo announced her resignation recently, we were caught off guard and surprised. And I know that we don't have long to wish her well. It's less than two weeks now. So I just wanted to make sure that I came up here, having served on the Board of Selectmen for 12 years and having had a lot of dealings with her, to thank her for her work that she did, she's done over these years. I mean, especially recently with the challenges of COVID, with the new election law, mail-by-law, early voting. She takes care of making sure that all of us have our ethics training done, our ethics certificates. You know, it's, we have, you know, in the State House, we have the unsung heroine awards coming up in June, but quite honestly, the Town Clerk's position is, is one of those positions that is kind of a quiet, unsung position because you don't hear about it until there's something wrong, and it's not often we hear something wrong in the Town of Auburn. So I just want to publicly thank the Town Clerk for her really dedicated service, especially through some significant challenges, and I wish you well in your new position.
Thank you. So that is all the public comments we have? We don't have any public? Oh. I'm sorry, is there someone online that would like to make a comment? Do you know where my mic went?
Let me see if I can...
Okay. Sorry, we're having a little technical difficulty with the camera. We're working to get them back on. All right, it looks like we're back on. Do we have anybody online that would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing there's none, we have no public hearings, we're going to move to communications. So everybody should have received an email from the Mass Municipal Association for newly-elected Select Board Member Training. It is a free training for June 9. I guess anybody who is interested can attend. Keep going on to the letter of resignation from the Town Clerk. Did you want to take this one?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We were informed by Deb last week of her intentions to move on. I'd also like to take this opportunity, and I've expressed my sincere best wishes to Deb and her, and her new adventure. Certainly, we're going to miss Deb. She brought a lot of experience and really advanced the office into what we now know is a smooth-running Town Clerk's office. And like Dorian said, she had her challenges over the past three years. It wasn't easy. And for that, Deb, we are grateful, and we, our entire admin family wishes you the best. That being said, we, I received the resignation. I notified the Board immediately because it's a little complex, given Deb's situation. As a result of taking up the balance question to the Board's eighteen year, as a result of that role, now that she's resigned, it returns back to the elected position. The fact that it's an elected position really required me to have a conversation with Town Council on how that is going to work. There is a process to appoint a temporary Town Clerk until the next annual election, which is the opinion of Town Council that I received. That being said, we will now move forward in hiring a temporary clerk, and that recommendation, that appointment by me, would require a vote of the Board of Selectmen to confirm that recommendation. So we're going to be bringing that to you at your first meeting in June. We have an assistant that can carry out the duties during that time, until such time we bring that vote to the Board. And so we will begin, at least our due diligence and our process in filling that position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, if the Board should have any at this time.
Excuse me, when is the, how long would the interim or temporary clerk be there? Until what election?
So it would be the day of 2024.
Thank you.
As it's an elected position, they need to reside in town, but as an appointment, do they need to reside in town?
Great question. We asked out of Town Council, the, no, they don't have to, the temporary one does not have to reside in town.
Madam Chair? I just, referencing the letter from Town Clerk Greamo, it does mention salary amount. I just wanted to know, as somebody who works in municipality and trying to attract and retain new employees at this day and age, especially post-COVID, has been difficult. Does the town, when was the last time the town did an assessment of the salaries with peer communities, and is that something you update regularly?
Through the chair to Mr. Karine, we update that at a minimum every three years, and we do so for labor negotiation purposes, as well as try to anticipate some shortfalls that we may have as a result of other communities making some gains in their offerings. And that's become very challenging, and I, I was committed when I took over as Town Manager. I mean, the new kid in block, people tend to use that as an opportunity to ask for wage increases, and I, I am committed to looking at that, but not right out of the gate, and I conveyed that to a number of individuals that had made requests for a review of their salary. I'm committed to doing that, and I pledged to do that and bring some adjustments to the Finance Committee, as well as town meeting in the fall. We know we're coming up short in a lot of areas, and in some cases, it's created some problems. We need to fix that, otherwise, we're going to have a very difficult time filling in some key positions here in town. Primarily, our division heads need to be reviewed. We have done an overall review, primarily of DDIS, in the last couple of years, and we highlighted those areas with the Finance Committee, and they gave us some flexibility to address those. We plan on doing the same for some other positions. I pledged to do the same for our Town Clerk. I told her I would be happy to review it. Unfortunately, I don't think she had the time to, for me to do that review. I think she needed a commitment sooner than later. Unfortunately, that didn't work out, but that's another position that we're going to have to take. Thank you.
One question, Madam Chair. If we schedule, I know there's discussion about scheduling a potential to an override, would that advance this position to that elect?
So that, I, if I may, I think you're referring to a potential debt exclusion for a public safety facility. Well, certainly, we're going to have to have those discussions. I don't see that happening in the near future. If anything, that would probably most likely occur on or about the annual of next year. I think the magnitude of the project requires a reconsideration of that project, maybe in a different, with a different focus. If that's the case, it may require a supplemental appropriation to do that work. That can only be done at a fall town meeting, and by the time that update is provided, it's bumping up against the annual town meeting anyway.
I just wanted to actually take a minute to thank Ms. Greamo for all of your hard work for the town. I know that you have been a great asset, you know, for us candidates, for the voters trying to register a vote. You've had a tough task to run those elections, especially during COVID, and in my book, you know, you're second to none. Thank you.
I agree. I also want to thank you, Ms. Greamo, for your dedicated work to the town. Are there any additional questions?
Well, I think it's timely, it's important, that we show appreciation for people who committed so much time and effort to the community, so I would hope that the Board would support this request. Hopefully, we have a meeting next week, arrange a presentation to the Town Clerk while she's still the Town Clerk, and we can embarrass her somehow with lots of other kind words, and maybe we can even get some of the Board of Registros in here to share some stories.
I'd be happy to support that. So members, we need to put your votes?
I'll make a motion that the Board issue a proclamation for Town Clerk Deb Greamo on her soon-to-be last day as Town Clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to have open the discussion. A member for the Flag Committee, is there any members on this Board that would like to be a part of the Flag Committee? Ooh, I'm so sorry.
Madam Chair, if I could just provide a brief history on that?
Absolutely, thank you.
We had, with the departure of Tristan La Liberty, former Chair of the Board, he served as a delegate of the, of the BOS. The committee's work is not complete, they haven't finished their task. Tristan reached out and asked if he could be considered as a member of the committee. What was complicated at the time is, given his locality, he's still a resident of Auburn, he's still eligible to vote. We didn't know whether the remote hybrid aspect of open meetings was going to be extended, and so the Board decided to wait until such time that is known. We now know that's going to continue for another two years. I think they also wanted to wait until they had new members of the Board to see if there's a new member or an existing member that would reconsider or would consider serving on the Flag Committee. If there is no interest, then the Board may want to consider the appointment of Tristan La Liberty.
Now, Chair, in the select on liberty would like to serve, I would be, and we now know that he is eligible to serve, and he has already put considerable time into this task, I would be happy to support his appointment as a member of the Flag Committee so that he can continue the work that he started.
Would any other members like to join the Flag Committee?
So if, I certainly don't want to deprive Tristan of finishing this, however, if we do need a current Board of Selectmen member, I'm more than happy to step up and finish the process.
I guess that puts him in a difficult position. I think I would prefer to have a current Board member on the Flag Committee. I, however, would not be opposed to Mr. La Liberty finishing out his project either.
I would make a motion that we appoint Tristan La Liberty to the vacancy, so that he can continue his work and complete his work. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Moving along, we have no gift acceptances. We do have a resignation from the Finance Committee. Mr. Kuznavich?
We received a resignation from Ms. Anne Kavanaugh, now a standing Board of Select Member. As a result of that election, resignation was required, so that now puts two vacancies. We, because at the last meeting, we notified the Board of Diane Burns, who is not seeking to be reappointed as of June 30. There's a lot going on, we need to really fill these positions. We advertised for Diane's seat. Hopefully, we'll get a, some interest in that seat, and we'll use any other applications as a consideration for Anne's seat as well. So, as you know, the appointment is made by the Board of Selectmen. Once we have some candidates to bring to you, we can schedule some interviews in open meeting, and the Board can consider whatever applicants are considered eligible. If I may, Diane, what vacancy do we have, Sharon? Do you remember what precinct? Four and Anne, you're five. So we would be seeking applications from those precincts first. If, in fact, none are received, we can consider an application from another precinct in town. I, we, great question. We'll have to take a look at that, at the composition.
Okay, thank you. And now, we're going to move along to the Town Manager items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think as a result of two newly-elected individuals on the Board, I know it was the Board's position relative to Perry Place project, that we got some direction from the Board to continue negotiations with the developer. I know the Board had indicated that they would like to do a site visit. I did get a call from Mr. Venakasa today, inquiring about the status of the Board's direction. I told him we were meeting tonight. I was seeking a reaffirmation of the Board's direction in terms of our engagement with the developer, as well as a potential site visit, so I don't know if the Board is prepared to take a position tonight, but certainly, I, I know the developer is getting a little anxious about the timing of, of the Board's decision.
I do believe the Board was looking for a site visit to look for sidewalks. Did we want to try to set a date and time for that now? Or would you like the developer to come back with some dates and times that they're available to, to move this forward?
Did they provide any direction or with respect to dates that they were looking for, times that they were available, or were they leaving it at our discretion, that they basically make themselves available when we were?
I did not seek any dates. I think they were waiting for the elections to take place to find out what the position of the Board was going to be. I'd be happy to do so. May I suggest maybe a Monday evening? Because I think it would be difficult to do during the day, given everyone's work commitment.
Through the Chair, there will be DPW Director as well. Anyone else that's leave? I don't know who else is leaving.
I, I would suggest, given everyone's involvement, DPW Director, I would say the Superintendent of the Auburn Water District, Town Administration, as well as the Board.
Given that next Monday is a holiday, and the week after that, we're going to meet, and the developer wants to do this, I assume sooner rather than later, does a different evening make sense?
So I know the Board meets every second, fourth, and fifth. Monday has a fifth, so because Monday's a holiday, we could carry that meeting over to Tuesday if the Board would like to meet. I don't know if they want to meet another on the fifth. Sometimes they meet, sometimes they don't. So we can try to line up maybe next Tuesday? I can propose that to the developer.
I would be open for Tuesday evening.
But that being said, I don't know if the Board would like to do a site visit with a follow-up meeting that evening, or whether they would opt not to have a meeting on the fifth Monday, which will now be Tuesday because of the holiday, and opt for any consideration at the first meeting in June.
Do we know what would be on the agenda for the meeting after the? Or would we come up with the agenda?
Normally, the agenda comes together. I mean, it's a one-week period now, not a two-week. I don't know if there are any items before the DCG that would require immediate action, but certainly, I am guessing if there is an agenda, it'd be a very light agenda.
Yeah, I was going to say that, looking at the last date of Town Clerk Greamo, who was June 2, if we wanted to do a proclamation while she's still here, then next week is the week to do it.
Sure. Deb, would you like to be recognized?
Absolutely.
Sit in queue and wait until the paperwork gets in. So that's the only thing that I was saying. I didn't realize you were probably waiting until your meeting in June, so you'd kind of have, not have somebody. So that's...
I would be prepared to bring something in. I, I quite honestly thought that the Assistant carries out the duties of...
She does.
Town Clerk in the absence of... Town clerk in the absence of.
Only my signature is in there on signing death certificates.
I, I wasn't aware of that, so, you know.
Normally, a clerk, an interim, or somebody else takes over that following date. So, like, the interim can carry out all the duties. However, the death certificates, paperwork has to be done and has to be signed, and you wouldn't have a clerk in place to be signing those.
I would be prepared to bring in a recommendation on that Tuesday meeting. That wouldn't be a problem. The problem being is, what time do we do the site visit if we have a meeting at 6:30? I, you know, I don't know what the board's availability is in terms of, you know, is four o'clock too early? Do board members have commitments that would not require you to be there at a certain time?
Four o'clock would be too early. I think five o'clock would be the earliest I can get. Okay.
Five o'clock's fine.
Five o'clock's fine. Okay. So we may opt, let me, let me just think about that. If, if time becomes a problem, maybe we can have the Board of Selectmen's meeting at seven instead of 6:30 to, to allow us some time to, to do the site visit and, and get back here for the opening of the meeting.
I think that would be reasonable, since it should be a fairly light meeting on that Tuesday.
I will reach out to the developer tomorrow.
Site visit? And if it's problematic for whatever reason, I will let the board members know.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I understood, Ms. Remo, is there going to be a problem without having someone authorized by the time she leaves, and what that time period is to get them authorized?
The assistant can carry out all the responsibilities of the clerk. However, since I'm resigning as of June 2nd, she technically wouldn't be using my, I wouldn't be signing the death certificates with my signature. So that's what I'm saying.
I think Mr. Chambers' question is, is how long would it take an interim clerk to be the interim clerk?
If you had the meeting on Tuesday, then we can get that paperwork all to the state registry so that her name would now, she'd send a signature, and she'd be able to.
Through the chair, Deb, in cases when you're on vacation for an extended period.
I'm still the, when I was still the clerk, she's signing on, I'm signing them, because.
Oh, she's using your signature?
Because I was the clerk. If I'm not the clerk as of June 2nd, she's, you know. So that's, you know, what I'm saying.
Is there a process of certification or verification?
Like, she knows, she knows how to certify everything. It's just getting her name as the clerk for the town to be signing those death certificates that are coming in under her.
It sounds like you need a meeting on Tuesday in the matter of one. It's not going to be that point by me, if you can't do the site visit. That, you know, it sounds like you're very busy.
I agree.
Through the chair, do you know how long it takes for that signature to get uploaded and accepted by the state?
I mean, we can ask for the rush. If it, if it was sent, I mean, Ginger still has to get, or whoever it is, has to get sworn in also. So if the person that you approve would get sworn in, and all that paperwork would be sent, and she'd be the administrator and everything, right now, I'm the administrator on all of that.
Okay, so it sounds like we are going to have a meeting on Tuesday to, at the very least, sort out the clerk issue. Uh, yes, Mr. Large S.
Yes. Talked about the 16 Perry Place. Have we gotten anything from the developer? Have we gotten traffic studies? Have we gotten any rainwater runoff studies? Anything? Has he given the town anything to do with this project? Or is he just trying to push it through without the town saying anything? We, we, we've been asking for road studies for two years now, and it just goes on and on and on. But yet, he wants the board to sign his LIP. And I think it's really great that you people asked for a site walk. I'm sure residents are going to point things out where the flooding has occurred just this past year, just this past month and a half with the rainwater. I think it's great that you're going to take a walk down there and see these things. But he hasn't given the town nothing yet.
Mr. Kaznovich, do you, has the developer provided studies?
They're, they're not going to provide that level of study and engineering. That's done before the regulatory boards, and those normally go out for a peer review. I don't think they're going to make the investment in that type of engineering study without knowing the direction of the project itself. So that is typically done at the, the ZBA level? That level is.
Selectmen commentators asked for this for, you know, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll do it, yeah, yeah, we'll get it, yeah, yeah, yeah. We haven't seen nothing. This developer is just pushing, 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 and thumbing his nose at you people. This is ridiculous. The neighbors are getting fed up and frustrated.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Large S. I think we will have to wait until the ZBA meetings to discuss the studies.
So you're gonna do everything and then, without hearing anything, just vote on the LIP?
We have had several discussions on the LIP, and we will continue to have discussions with the developer. Thank you.
That's what I'm asking you. Are you going to ask him, and then is he going to show up with anything for you people that you've asked?
I do believe Mr. Kaznovich said that that is not at this level, that the engineering studies happen later.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goodrich?
Thank you. Just following up on the discussion that you just had about Perry Place and a site visit, and then a potential board meeting at 7:00 PM. Unless I misunderstood, I would urge you to post this as a regular board meeting if all five members of you are going to be there. And you're going to have members from, from the DPW and Water, and there's going to be discussion there, where this is such a contentious issue. You certainly, especially with new board members, don't want to even have the appearance of an open meeting law violation. So I would suggest that you post that meeting for whatever time you're planning on doing the site visit. And then if you want to include any public comment, I would put that on the agenda, that that would be held back at the selectmen's meeting room at 7:00 PM or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Goodrich raises a good question about Tuesday evening. I don't even know if there's a, a meeting scheduled in this room. Deb, would you know, who meets, planning board meet on Tuesday?
They do, but I know they're not meeting tomorrow, so I don't think they're meeting next Tuesday.
No, they're not meeting next Tuesday. They're meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. We just need to find out if there's any other meeting scheduled in this room.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, will the residents be allowed to point out the situations to you people?
No.
On, onsite?
No, thank you. Moving along to table items?
Why would that be? If you're coming down there to look at the site for the residents and the builder, the builder's showing you one point, why can't the resident say, yes, look, this is the situation here, this is the situation here, this is the situation here?
Thank you, Mr. Large S. Residents will be able to make comments at the public comment section of the select board meeting.
Okay, so.
Oh, okay. So I think the town manager would, is looking for a vote to reaffirm the board's position?
I'll second it.
Yes, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair, yes. So moving along, we have no table items. Do we have any select board member items? Included in the packets are the minutes from April 24th and May 8th. Do we have any corrections, comments? Or will we accept them as read? And I think we just need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.